Good evening, everyone. I call the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for April 1st, 2025 to order. Welcome to everyone who is here today joining us on YouTube, joining us here in person. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. So tonight, we do not have any special presentations. At this time, I will open the floor for public comments. This opportunity is for non-agenda-related items. So if there's anyone who signed up, no, no one has, okay. No one has signed up for public comments at this time, so we will move forward with the consent agenda. And need to have a motion to adopt the consent agenda this evening?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the consent agenda that has been seconded. Are there any comments or discussion regarding the minutes? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Okay, next up, we have old business, and this is a continued item. It's H 2025-01-R Caldwell Business Park PUD Amendment. It's a request to amend the existing Caldwell Business Park Plan Unit Development District. And at this time, we will hear from staff. Ms. Shelley DeHart following staff. We will have an opportunity for public comments. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. DeHart.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. So I'll briefly go over the presentation that, the information that was provided at your last meeting, and then follow up with additional information that was requested. And also, we have our town manager here, Rob Dunham, who is also going to address the board on this proposed amendment. So as a reminder, this is a conditional zoning request to amend and approve Plan Unit Development, referred to as Caldwell PUD, Caldwell Park PUD. Now, this specific request is not to change the uses or the boundaries. This is a request to change a performance standard in a specific area. So we're asking to amend the maximum building height performance standards for properties located within the business park section of this PUD. And I'll go to some maps in just a couple of minutes. No other modifications are proposed. The intent of the amendment is to establish building heights within this business park area, consistent with those found in today's ordinance, and facilitate economic development. This case was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board at its March 18th meeting. At that time, the board voted to continue this item to tonight's meeting, requesting the following information. So what was requested was zoning maps identifying locations where similar zoning and building heights are possible within the town, and how many of those lots are vacant, a line of sight exhibit for the proposed building height. I do have a handout at your, your seat, and we will be showing that information to the public. Examples of existing building heights within Harrisburg, and a list of allowed land uses that are currently permitted within the business park area of this Plan Unit Development. Now, I'm not going to take much time at all on that, just because this is an approved PUD with property rights of use. We're not proposing to amendment, amend those. And there have been recent state legislation that would actually prohibit a town for removing uses that someone has rights to today without their express consent. So that list of allowed uses is found within your packet that you received tonight. So just as a reminder, the Plan Unit Development is located between Highway 49 and Tom Query Road along Caldwell Road and Caldwell Park Drive. The zoning map on the left, the entire brown area is within the PUD. The subject area where we're proposing this change to building height is in the business park area, which is this cross-hatched area. This has been identified for light industrial use along Caldwell Park Drive. Again, little history, this was over a 127-acre Plan Unit Development proposed by Crosland. It was approved back in 1999. It was approved with three types of districts. There was an approved residential area that is completely built out. There was a proposed, or an approved, a mixed district, which currently houses Ace Academy. And then the business park area, which again is this entire area, which has not built out. So when originally evaluating this, we, we looked for similar zoning districts in today's UDO. So when this was approved back in 1999, the three districts were BG, BN, and IG. Those zoning classifications do not exist in our UDO today, but I think they've just really been rebranded to General Commercial, GC, NC, and EC for Employment Center. So we provided this information again, it's your last meeting. We pulled together a table with the prior regulations from 1999 and current standards. And again, we are focusing in on height. It's very unusual for any zoning ordinance to have one maximum height for various commercial districts. They usually vary based on the type of use that is primarily identified for that zoning district. So again, this proposal is to increase the maximum building height within the business park area only. That business park area allows three different zoning districts. Again, we're trying to match it up with current building height. The general business, or the BG, would be 40, maximum 48 feet in height. The business neighborhood would be 50 feet, and that's typically where you see mixed use. They might have retail on the bottom, office on top. We don't have a lot of BN zoning within Harrisburg today. IG, again, is identified for light industrial use, and current regulations allow for a maximum of 72 feet in height. So you asked for some information regarding the comparable zoning districts of today. That would be general commercial, the EC, which is Employment Center, and the neighborhood commercial, where they are located within today's, on today's zoning map, and they would be allowed to have the same height that is proposed within this amendment. So first, I'm going to bring up the EC, which is the Employment Center of this area. We did get a final number of, the number of parcels within that area. There are 18 parcels. We were not able to get all the data we were looking for from the county. Of those, I do not have a count of which ones may be available for occupancy. There, there's a building, but it may be vacant or unimproved. Yes. Then we have the general commercial, where you typically see that along Highway 49 and within major corridors at intersections. So near Farmington on Rocky River Road, you'll see a couple of small pockets. Neighborhood commercial, as you can see, it's very limited, where we allow neighborhood commercial. Now, one thing I wanted to show is the town has four Plan Unit Development districts. We have the Town Center, which is a place here right around Town Hall. So I looked at, I read up on its PUD, and it does allow a maximum of four stories, the building. There's no maximum cap on height, it just says four, four stories. Also, again, we're all aware, the Caldwell PUD is currently limited at 40 feet. The Farmington PUD at Rocky River Road, on the north side of Rocky River Road, is allowed by ordinance. So it's commercial district, and it's town home districts. There's varying heights, but it would be consistent with what is allowed today. Brookdale, that is the south side of Rocky River Road, where the Harris Teeter Shopping Center, it does allow a maximum of three stories. So some of these PUDs are limited by the number of stories, not by maximum building height, and others are specific to building height. So you asked for some examples of the tallest buildings we have in Harrisburg, and they were pretty limited. The, the Town Hall showed 53 feet, but I don't believe that was all the way to the top of the building. You know, they measure building height different in building code and zoning code. So this is probably one of the tallest buildings, but also some of the multitalents around here in the Town Center. Although these may be three stories, you can see if the pitch can add another story. So we'd measure to the top of the pitch of the roof in measuring that height. I have a couple other examples within the Town Centers. You can see, this one I provided to show, these are two-story townhomes, would be similar to single-family, and then you have the taller builder, buildings over in this area, right across the street. So one other item that you asked for was a line-of-sight example, and I've provided the handout, the exhibit, the full exhibit, at your seat this evening. So we were able to get an architectural firm to provide this for us, and what we took into account, if we were to, to max out the building heights, say on the north side, this is one of the vacant properties, and max out the height, and we were looking at the site example from two different streets. One is Underwood Avenue. And again, this one doesn't really have, it would be A, right down here. So if we were to look at this from the street, and at the maximum height within the business park area, this is what you would see. So you can see here, you have the Underwood, the topography that goes along. This is the road, which is a lot closer together with Underwood. And then, based on the topography, you'd be looking at the side of the building, and that would be pretty much what you would see. Cotswold, now Cotswold, I'll go back again, is B here. That's a cul-de-sac in the adjacent development. There is required open space in this area. I'll go over in a few minutes. That has to remain as natural area. So it is wooded. There's a mix of evergreen and canopy trees within that area, and the, the topography does vary in that area. But from the cul-de-sac, you'd be looking at the front of the building, and based on the line-of-sight example we have, and the topography, of course, here's the cul-de-sac. It kind of shows the foot, the existing building to the east. You can see that a little bit. But the road is quite a ways from that parcel. There's a minimum 50-foot front yard setback that would be required for the building. If they were to build it, they would, this would be the line-of-sight example. I did want to point out that, okay, this parcel's developed. This has a minimum 100-foot open space. I've measured the wooded area just per GIS, and it's about an acre with, worth of exists, existing wooded area here. And then this is a vacant lot. This is the cul-de-sac we were talking about, and of course, the vacant lot over here. On this lot alone, this represents about four and a half acres of wooded, required open space that needs to be retained. So if there was development on that property, it would be closer to the road over here. So at the last meeting, it was staff's recommendation to, we believe it is in compliance with the requirements of a map amendment within the UDO, consistent with the goals of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan as it relates to land use and economic development. And we had recommended that this board recommend approval of this amendment to the Town Council. So we'll follow up real quick, and I'll invite the town manager to address the board. But we did ask that you would receive this report, any public comments, and after deliberations, you have options. You can approve, recommend approval to the Town Council as presented, approve with modifications, or recommend disapproval of this proposed map amendment. And then we would need to make the required findings consistent with your recommendation. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be, I'd love to invite the town manager to address the board.
Thank you, Shelley.
Shelley's so thorough, I'm gonna have a harder time keeping up. Thank you, Shelley. Madam Chair, Board, thanks for having me this evening. And thanks again for coming in for a special meeting. And I want to start off first by apologizing for having to have you come in here for a second meeting. That is our fault on a staff standpoint. Our planning and zoning folks were taking this on a parallel path, where they see this as a change that is consistent with our current zoning, is in the best interest of the public, it meets our EC zones. We also have an economic development project going on a parallel path with this that requires the change. So I think from their standpoint, this was kind of going through a, a normal path that just gets approvals and text amendments and updates. Didn't expect the attendance of myself or any of our ED folks to answer questions. So they got caught kind of unaware, and were uncomfortable answering a lot of the questions that would be project-specific. So that's why I'm here this evening, is so that I can answer those questions, both for the board and for the general public. And we did try to, try to introduce ourselves and, and meet some of the neighbors out there. From a project-specific standpoint tonight, obviously, I won't be able to get into a ton of specifics on the project, but I can get into it close enough and in a lot of generalities about what we are targeting out there. And I think as we do that, and we have that discussion, that it becomes very obvious that what we're approaching out here is giving up a little bit of height, which is certainly the change that we're asking for. But the gain is proving or, or changing the highest and best use in the area that elevates that area from uses that are more impactful to the residents to a use that's less impactful to the residents. And after I obviously go through our stuff and speak with the board, I'm happy to, to take a seat on the dais, and as you open public comment, or if there are questions, I can answer directly to the public. I'll be here all night for that as well. So our timeline is we planned on having a approval at the April meeting for this change so that we can keep our economic development project on pace. This is, you know, a project that is not asking for any tax incentives. They're not getting any tax breaks. They're not asking for anything other than speed to market, and we're doing that through an expedited process through our town. It significantly increases the taxable value in the area, and it does so with zero noise pollution, with zero air pollution, with minimal traffic. You know, we're talking half a dozen vehicles a day coming to a site. So we're not overcrowding our streets. We're not overcrowding our schools. They don't need a lot of our water or sewer resources to provide this. So we view this as the absolute minimal impact that you can have next to a residential neighborhood, but also the maximum economic impact, which is what we've been, been targeting from a town standpoint, is, you know, we're doing very well as far as economics. We are very heavily reliant on single-family housing. It's kind of a one-trick pony for us, that's 85% of our taxable value. It's a pretty good pony. We, we do very well in that, in that regard. But if we're going to diversify our tax base, we're looking at how do we do that throughout the town and bring in more commercial and industrial without having the negative industrial? We've, we've just all been aware of a, of a site that filed a special use permit, and it's not that type of industrial. Those are the things we're trying to get away from and go to clean, energy-efficient, low-impact, high-value targets that blend in with our residential neighborhoods, and that's what we have out here. And again, we're doing that without offering tax breaks or tax incentives. These are just by being good business partners, having the right resources, being in the right location. So that is what we're targeting out here, and, you know, I don't want to guess what you all want to know. So rather than add to Shelley's presentation, I was just going to open it up, answer questions, and, and have a dialogue.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. So we will open it up to the board to pose any questions you'd like to our town manager.
I, I have a question.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you very much for that information. I feel like it's very valuable. And I love this show and tell. It's very, very good. How tall is this building that you have in here?
Shelley, you're showing that at the maximum.
I'm showing that, I asked the architect to show it.
So Shelley's showing that at the max. Our target is 60-foot, which is the same height that we have at the condos that you see right next to Town Hall. So that would be a very equivalent building to, from peak of that to peak of this.
Okay. Next question, with the project in mind, do you have somebody ready to go and develop it, and they're?
We do.
Okay. And so is this going to be a lease situation, or is it, or there, is it going to be their building? I mean, if it's leased, is it going to be, how long are the leases? You say minimal traffic impact now, but what about 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, when that lease is up?
It's, it's a single, it's a single product. See how, you know, I, I think it's best if I just explain not who it is, but?
I appreciate that.
What it is. So I mean, we're looking at data centers. I mean, that is ultimately, we're looking at modern data centers here. And so the typical client for a modern data center is Google, Apple, Facebook, Cisco, and Amazon. Those are your, those are your big five. It's the biggest, it's the biggest companies that you're all aware of, and these are, these are long-term investments. These are not something that can kind of be repurposed into another type of industrial or manufacturing use, and they, they require a lot of equipment in them that has to be renewed every three years. And so North Carolina is a good place for that, being that we're exempt from sales and use tax. There is not a situation where a data center in, in this country has been repurposed for logistics or something else. And our data isn't going away. These are things that we all house off-site now. We don't have very many servers in Town Hall anymore, just like they don't have very many servers at banks anymore. This is all outsourced into the cloud.
Is it a speculation building, or are they building for a specific customer?
I can't answer that, but we're confident with their, with their approach. We have toured their facility. We've met with these folks. This is, they're doing their due diligence, just as, as we're doing ours, but the ingredients for this type of product exists in Harrisburg, and specifically at this site.
And the maximum height is at the parapet height or roof line, right? Not gutter line? That's what you're showing in your displays? Apparently, that's what it is.
Yes, yes. It took into account the equipment too on the side view, so they, they have equipment.
That should be shielded by the parapet, that's the maximum height.
To that point, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any other sites in Harrisburg that, that meet their specifications, or is it just this? For now, it's this one. You know, I think there, there are opportunities throughout the town that, who some, this is an area that's already industrial. It meets all of their specifications minus height. A lot of those specifications are, are not something we can, can adjust to as a town. Fiber, electric, th- these are things that just exist independent of us. We happen to have an industrial site that has those utilities, that has a roadway, that has water, that has sewer. They're site-ready. They're ready to go. All of this undeveloped acreage here, the highest best use for it is this. And, and I would encourage, again, I, you know, this evening, I'm going to be asking the board to, and I think that by the time we're done, we should all feel very comfortable to move this project forward. But we still have to hear this at the council level, and between this meeting and then, I would encourage everybody in the audience, and everybody at the board who hasn't Googled this, right? Research it all yourself, you're not going to find anything different than, than what we have here. This is just a good opportunity for the town to set a certain area up, and, and I think we have certain other areas in mind that, that may or may not pan out for something like this, but this is an area that we have right now, ready for a specific project, and this facilitates that.
But they need 72. They can't go any lower.
Correct.
So the staff report mentions advanced manufacturing, and looking at this particular area for that purpose, along with technological services. So I'm curious to make sure I'm on the same page. What falls underneath the, the concept of advanced manufacturing in your mind?
I'll defer to Shelley on what our definitions are. I'm really, I'm really here for the specific project component.
Well, I'm ill-prepared for that question. I'd have to go back to the ordinance that was in place at the time to read the definition of advanced manufacturing. So the use table that you do have in your packet is from the, the ordinance that was in place at the time that identified the allowed uses.
Okay.
You see it had a whole list of manufacturing. I do not know back in 1999 how they defined advanced manufacturing.
Okay, so I need to refer back to that list that was provided, back with the?
That's correct.
Approval of the PUD back in 1999?
C of your, is the use table.
Okay.
Is the use table that?
Yeah, I proposed that prior to the meeting, but I too did not commit it to memory. So, yeah, thank you.
I wanted to also add while you're, while you're looking at that, you know, certainly we're targeting out in this area, highest best use, the best neighbor, you know, next to, next to folks. I don't want it to be lost that we also have the most stringent landscape and architectural standards that the law allows. And our developers remind us of that every time that we have a submittal. And we push it a little further than that, right? We ask for voluntary additions to that above and beyond what we have in our code. And, you know, this specific developer that we're working with on, on this potential project has been amenable to that. And we would expect folks in this same class of development to be very amenable to that. They want to be good neighbors. They already have a product that just leads them to be good neighbors, but they don't put signs out front. They don't want to be bothered. They don't want, they want to blend in and kind of sink away. So I think you saw on last month's, or on last meeting's presentation, some vine walls, earth tone colors on the building. These are really buildings that they're not looking to be flashy. They'll make them as nice as we want them architecturally. So you see a lot of faux windows and things like that. They don't want the windows. They put them there for us because we want it to look a little prettier. So they're very flexible. We can do architecturally and landscape-wise. And again, we can, we, we push them to the very limit. But voluntarily, we get a lot more out of these folks.
Can you reveal the number of proposed loading docks?
I will get back with you with that. I can't, I don't want to give you an exact number. There's going to be at least two garage doors, but they're not necessarily loading docks in what we would think. But they're not going to be docks. These, these are garage doors. And they, they're there to take out the trash.
Equipment in and out.
The, the workers in a building like this are maintenance workers. They come in and they maintenance the HVAC. They maintenance the electrical components. They're doing their safety checks, their fire checks. A building of, of the size that we're looking at right now would have somewhere between six to 10 full-time workers.
Can you reveal square footage?
How about approximate square footage?
Well, I know it's all ballpark. No, we're very early into this.
We're under 250,000 square feet.
Just for clarification, the use table is an attachment E in your packet. Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Say that what, what you propose, what, what I hear is complimentary to Harrisburg and the neighborhood and our goals as a community. And this, they are doing their due diligence. And we go ahead and we approve this and they fall for it now.
The highest best use is still, it's still for this product, regardless of if we had an EDC project. I think the importance of me being here tonight and kind of revealing really what I think is kind of the edge of what I can, just has to do with scheduling. You know, we're, we're looking, we brought you in for a special meeting and we're willing to kind of have this conversation impromptu because we have a specific vendor. If we weren't, we'd still be looking for this change regardless of an EDC project. And we would still be marketing this project or this, this area to this type of user because their valuation for a building is many times the magnitude of the best manufacturing facility that you can get out here. So for example, in, in a site like this, like an Amazon Logistics Warehouse would, would be kind of the best, highest use. That would get you the, the highest taxable value. It would get the broker the highest payment on selling that land. As that type of property gets filled up along 85, they inquire in the town, they inquire as far out as, as the eastern edge of Harrisburg. So this is certainly one of those areas for that. That comes with vehicles 24/7. That comes with the magnitude of workers there doing shift changes. And it's not worth a tenth of what this product is. So it's just more of a market thing is, is it, as we, as we make this kind of site ready, then the brokers that own those properties know, oh, I can now, I can now approach a different client for this. Right now, they can approach at max, advanced manufacturing and logistics. Those are the two most valuable things. If you increase the height, those become cheap. They can't afford this property. It really is tailor-made for what we already have a project here for. And that really comes with the location of the fiber and the, and the electric. There aren't a lot of sites throughout the nation that kind of have those crossroads of utilities ready.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have one other question. Were there any traffic restrictions that would go along with this? So to maybe say it another way, if this developer were to step away and another were to see another purpose, whether it be logistic or mixed? Is there any type of?
Yeah, so what we're, what we're asking for is just an increase in the height. We're, we don't, one, we don't have the ability, but we're also not asking for a change to the use. So all those other uses that I mentioned, they're allowed there now. They can set up tomorrow. We don't have to bring it to the board. Doesn't even come to me. Goes to Shelley and they're off and running. They would still be allowed under this. And there's just state prohibition on downzoning right now. So we couldn't, even if we wanted to modify down and restrict things. I think if we can get that bill changed, which we've been lobbying for aggressively, and there is a bill going through the legislature to revise that, we would look at some changes throughout the town for some, some areas that our code's not, not quite as tough in, in, in that regard. Did I answer that, I hope?
You did.
Okay. If there are no other questions, thank you very much, Rob. We do appreciate you being here tonight and sharing the information that you could share with us. Thank you so much. So at this time, we will move forward and open the floor for public comments. So if there is anyone, well, actually I have a list here of those of you who have signed up. And I will call you up to the lectern. When you approach the lectern, please state your name, your full name and your address for the record. Be courteous and keep your comments to about three minutes. So first up, we have Mr. Michael, and forgive me, Haringfield?
Yes.
Okay, Haringfield. Good evening.
It's good to see you guys again. So I do have a couple of questions or considerations. One thing that I saw in the, in the presentation, and thank you for putting that together. The line of sight presentation shows a 60-foot building. I believe I heard we're asking for the maximum and that their intent to build is the maximum. Is that correct?
No, it's actually, it's actually the opposite. So we asked them to, with the equipment on top of what they call the penthouse, to show us the maximum height, measured height to different areas. So they only, it's proposed at like 60, between 60 and 65. But what they showed is just the equipment on top that would be up there to.
So as far as considerations, I believe there's only three lots that are available then in the, in the putt, correct? One is right next to the yarn.
And then this one, yes, this is the yarn facility.
One is to the north of the yarn. There's two across the street, correct? They straddle the SBI.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. So that's one, okay, so there's only two lots. So the one on the left, I mean, we've talked about this in the last meeting. I think we were discussing that because that one is backed straight up to the neighborhood, if that is the lot that they're looking for, putting a 60-foot building there is probably be intrusive to the neighborhood. I would, I would request that this is not approved at a blanket level, that we approve with modifications if we are going to approve to make that lot remain at 40, simply because it matches with the yarn building that's right there already that's also 40. And then if you're looking to put it across the street near the SBI building, the, the land on the right-hand side of the SBI building is actually a little bit more elevated than the land on the further. It's actually downhill on that backside. So, you know, a 60-foot building, I think to your point, would kind of at least be a little bit lower in that space. So that's, that's what I'd like you to at least consider that part of that. The other part I wanted to mention, and I don't know if you, if you've driven past the, past this road, down past the cement area on the right-hand side into Mecklenburg County, because the NC DOT did us no favors because there used to be three exits and entrances for this business park. There's now only one. And that's right at the entrance to Caldwell Road. If you look at the Mecklenburg side, they're actually developing and building on that side. So I don't know if we're allowed to even talk with their planning board, but I'd like to kind of understand what they're building out there and driving their traffic through Cabarrus County. A backup, you know, could be, you know, intrusive to us as well. So just consider that if that's possible to find out what they're building back there because they could build anything. And we're kind of stuck with that at Cabarrus County, wearing, tearing our roads, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haringfield. Next, I'm sorry, Bish. B-I-S-H. I can see that part. Would you please tell us the correct pronunciation of your name and full name and address?
Yes, my name is Bisham Tarajuli. And I live on 7820 Weather Sport Place, right behind the, that area. And I have been living there since 2010. And I have a couple of concerns with this rezoning as a whole, right? We are talking about 72 feet. So let me tell you, 72 feet is a seven-story building. That is taller than the Town Hall, taller than any existing structure we have in Harrisburg now. And the area that we are talking about, that Caldwell Park Drive, it is a little higher than the Caldwell Road itself. It, it goes a little bit uphill with that premium yard. It plateaus up there and then goes downhill, right? So if we allow anything, even six-story building, it would be seen from all of the Harrisburg, like the water tank over there. And everyone would ask, whoever comes here in Harrisburg who is new, from the Harrisburg Park, from the Town Center, all the city, what building is that? The proposed building we are talking about, six-story building or almost seven-story building with something on the top, right? Instead of looking at our garden-like city with all the treetops, tree canopies, and it's a beautiful city. Everyone will come and ask, oh, what is that? Because it will be visible from all of the city. Please, please, right? I mean, whenever, anything, right? Six stories, seven-story building, it's not a joke, right? I mean, this Town Hall used to be seen from all the way to the Rocky River Road. I mean, it is now, it is only 50 feet. Now we are talking about 72. That is not a joke. And with that, we also need to think about the traffic, the noise, the data center. Data center, of course, will come with a lot of cooling. We are talking about the data center. Think about it. They are talking about building a data center in the Antarctic or in the Greenland because it's a cooler there. It comes with a huge fan, huge cooling structure and the noise and the electricity consumption and the traffic. Think about it. Data center is not something that you put in the middle of the neighborhood. You will see a lot of data center on the way to the mountains because it's a cooler there, electricity is cheaper and it's a lot of streams to cool down their idea, to cool down their buildings. Data center will have a lot of environmental issue. Maybe like even the microclimate around that area, it will be heated, one or two degrees Fahrenheit. I mean, I'm not just making this up. Just do your research. Data center should not be in the middle of the neighborhood, no. With a seven-story tower, think about it. It will be seen from everywhere, not only from here, from the Bloom, from the data center, from Town Center, and maybe from the Mecklenburg County too. I mean, whatever we have done in 1999, we cannot come and change it. But we cannot and we should not make it worse than what it already there. Forty-story building, 48 feet should be enough. But anything higher than that, and also the data center, it, it shouldn't be inside the neighborhood. I mean, people are living very close by. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have, forgive me, Hari Odell. And please give me your correct pronunciation of your name, please.
Obviously, Hari Odell, 5821 Andrew Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
My major concern, I think already many people already focus on the point. And then I agree with that. Please, you can put my, put the note on my, on my regard. My major concern is that if the building is 70 feet, can we reduce down? And then, or the building can be relocated on the somewhere so that it can be okay, right? Like at the corner or intersection area, 70-feet building, that can be moved to the another location, right? Or, or can be reduced, maybe 40 or 50, he just mentioned. I think Mike also mentioned that. Yeah, we can do that too. And as I, as Bisham told me or already mentioned that, sorry, the consequence of the, our plan, after 10 years, after five years, after 20 years, are you imagining that or not? It's a lot of things that we have to think. I think that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Next up, it looks like Mr. Jay Halpern. If you would approach the lectern, please, and state your full name and, and address for the record.
Good evening. Jay Halpern. I live in the Coventry subdivision. And I'm not, don't want to address the height situation. I think that those points have been made and will be taken under consideration. And this, the thing that I'd like to bring up is traffic coming out of the park onto Caldwell Road. And it's just been brought up that there will be additional traffic coming in from Mecklenburg. So right now, leaving Coventry onto Caldwell or leaving the road from the industrial park onto Caldwell is literally a nightmare, especially with cars coming over the hill and the big trucks that are coming out. I mean, it's just a recipe for disaster. So that I just bring up the point that regardless of what development is going to be in the industrial park, some sort of situation to mitigate the traffic problem there, coming out of Coventry and coming out of the industrial park needs to be taken into consideration, whether it's a traffic light or whatever the experts would say, it needs to be taken care of. It's a problem right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halpern. Next, we have Mica Cash.
Thank you. Good evening. Good to see everybody again. My name is Mica Cash. I'm at 7801 Ashby Drive. And while I agree with all of my neighbors who have already spoken this evening, I wanted to also discuss what we talked about two weeks ago, which is, one, once we make this change, we can't go back. Whoever wants to build something up to 72 feet will be allowed to do so without coming back to this body. So if you choose to reject it outright, that's fine. I'm not going to disagree with that. But if we are at the very least going to think about a compromise, I would like to make sure we put in with the modifications that the plots to the south, I'm sorry, plots to the south and west of the road remain at 40 because they are adjacent to us in the neighborhood. And that at least makes it so that they have to come back. the neighborhood, and that at least makes it so that they have to come back if something wants to be built there. We understand, we talked about, we floated 50 or 60 as a possibility to the east and north of the road two weeks ago. That's not an option with this particular development. I understand that. I also want to acknowledge that I appreciate the work that the town has done to try to find a business here that is as unobtrusive as possible, thinking about quality of life and thinking about only six cars. I do appreciate that. But again, I agree with everything else that has been said tonight about it. So my encouragement would be, if you're not going to reject this outright, to do so with modifications on the south and the west, and try to say, maybe it's only to the north and east in that one plot of land, if we are going to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cash. Is there anyone else who would like to add comments, public comments at this time before the floor is closed? Please approach the lectern, sir, and give your full name and address for the record.
It's Russell White, 7722 Cotswold Court. And it just came to me today, listening to this presentation, is this, are we targeting this zoning change, or are we rezoning the whole area? I would be concerned that if we rezone the whole area, somebody could actually come with the, I can always get the name of that building wrong. I've gotten grief from calling it far yarns last time, so premier yarns. But somebody could come and modify that, maybe put equipment on top of the building there, restructure it such a way that, you know, we could have a 72-foot building there. I think if we're going to do this, we need to target where we're going to rezone, and I kind of agree with most of the comments that have been made here. But yeah, rezoning to that height next to the neighborhood would just, there's no way you could hide that. And I know we talk about the trying to protect the neighborhood by putting up certain landscaping, but it just hadn't been really successful in the past. It was supposed to be done within five years, and they were nowhere close to that with premier yarns. And they still, there's a lot of places where that building is just obvious. So 72-foot, there's no way. So that's my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment at this time? Okay. We will close the public comment section at this time, and open up the board for deliberation regarding this issue.
Madam Chair, if I may, before you guys enter deliberation, I did take notes here for each of the residents, and would like to give an answer to a few directly, and just for the board's certification prior. And, you know, I do understand, certainly every speaker that came up here made great points, and, you know, Mr. Herringfield had mentioned, you know, no blanket, you know, put 40 in some, and 72 in others, as well as, you know. I think what you're going to see as you do your research online and stuff is that much of the Mecklenburg County development is the same type of development we're targeting here. And so, yeah, we're going to experience some negative effects from them, and we don't have any control over them, right? So as they kind of are targeting the same products that have the lowest impact, and we look at limiting those heights, we just encourage the higher-impact developments. So, you know, I do have a real concern that what we have right out here right now, the best thing you can put out there is an Amazon logistics warehousing that's your most valuable, or some of the advanced manufacturing, you know, Galvan does very well in this area, that, you know, spinoffs of that type of thing. And when I look at protecting our residents, especially the lot that isn't involved with the EDC, I just look at this area in general, and Shelley and I have had this conversation, you know, if I live along that property line, I want the lowest impact. So I am empathetic to the fact that it's like, we're skeptical about our side of the street, right? I mean, and 40, you know, just feels tall, and there is a trade-off there, right? I mean, there's no way to get around that. 70 is bigger than 40. It just is taller, and that is more visible, and it's more intrusive. And so you're giving up some visible obstruction with the fact that, you know, again, this is just, our assurance is, we can't obviously do anything code-wise. I think those are going to be very attractive buildings compared to the manufacturing that exists out there now. But what you get for that extra 30 feet is you don't get the traffic that Mr. Halpern mentioned. You know, you get a couple of pedestrian or single rider vehicles, you get a couple Honda Civics, maybe a pickup truck, six a day, coming in and out of there, instead of hundreds of workers or trucks. The noise that, and I'll apologize, because I couldn't catch the name there either they spoke, but, you know, the AC units, that's what those parapets are for. Those are noise-dedding parapets. The older data centers that you look at 20 years ago had a little bit of a hum to them, and you do some noise studies and noise mitigation. We went toward these. Ashburn, Virginia is going to be the world headquarters of data centers. You can, you know, check it out up there. You can hear a pin drop outside of these, and they're very proud of that. These are adjustments that they've made. So having very quiet, low-traffic, low pollution, you're not having people out on this property all the time that are very close to your property, they're very private, they have their own security on-premise, they don't want people on their property, they keep it very clean. Those are all the things that you gain, is just you have a great neighbor instead of lights, horns, backup beeping, you know, 2:00 AM deliveries, loading docks moving up and down. Those are the things that we can get away from with this, but, you know, there is the height restriction. So I just want to, you know, point that out to the folks that brought it up with height, that, you know, our recommendation from a staff standpoint is, right across the street, we have EC zone. Shelley, can you go back to the zones that you showed there with EC? One more, right there. So, you know, when you look at the purple where Shelley's, I mean, this is the adjacent area. So, you know, we could, you could have the scenario where 60 foot away from this zone, you have a 72-foot building. And we have this all over the town where this is permissible, and this is right adjacent to it. So we do think it fits. We don't think it's a big give, and it's not a seven-story building. Stories are much bigger than 10 feet. It's a two-story building. These buildings do require about 25 foot per story, plus the parapets and the mounting equipment and the HVAC. But, you know, I think this building, again, is 50 foot to the kind of, well, you can see on the wall here, but the flat corners, you know, those are the 50 foot that I think Shelley is talking about there. When we look at condos, those are about 60 foot to peak. You're not seeing them all over town. Our water tower is like, you know, well over 100 foot, and you can see that, and we set that at the highest properties available. So, you know, we're very comfortable with that, but I'm happy to meet with residents, too, and kind of get into more of the details of that. Even after it goes to the town board, and even if this is approved by all parties, we're still committed to working with the residents out there to mitigate any problems that we do have. The last one I had here, oh, was the redevelopment from Mr. White. So, you know, we heard a lot of this, you know, target. If you could stay back there, Shelley, on the site distance. Yeah, that one would be fun. You know, I understand, like, the being skeptical on, like, premier yarns, right? That's been a problem. They've not been a great tenant there as far as being a good neighbor. You know, I've been here nine years. I was the town engineer and the public works director, and then a few other roles before becoming the manager. So I was involved with when you all had problems with trucks parking out there and idling, and you had the diesel exhaust pluming out there, and we had to chase them off with sheriffs and put up no parking signs. From a staff standpoint and a town standpoint, we're committed to doing everything in our power. We do have other tools that we use to protect the public when folks come in for redevelopment. We do not share that same fear, of course, you know, it's in your backyard, so that matters. But, you know, I would say, hold us accountable to that if that becomes an issue. We're not going anywhere. My office is here in the buildings, so is Shelley's. We're willing to do what we need to do out there to use the other tools that we have outside, you know, our policies and procedures that are outside of the ordinance to deal with redevelopment. But I don't see, there aren't, like, for instance, that building, it's not structurally made to add a third. So in order to redevelop premier yarns, you'd have to tear it down, build new foundations, and go up higher. The market for that is really office, and you could get a third floor on an office with this height. You couldn't get to a fourth, and that's a possibility. But if you're going to tear something down out here, the most money that comes in in investment is going to be in data centers. I think I answered everything, but I do want to just double down on the fact that traffic was mentioned like four times in this. And this improvement, or this proposal, actually solves that issue, right? If we don't want more traffic out here, we have a very narrow area that we can actually address. We can't address what Mecklenburg does, unfortunately. But we could reduce the total traffic load in this area from potentially a couple thousand trips to a couple dozen trips. And that's, to me, that's very impactful from a public servant standpoint, when we're trying to do what's best for the community, to say, we can mitigate water pollution, air pollution, noise pollution. We can attract businesses that don't overcrowd our schools, don't crowd our streets, and contribute significant amounts to our tax base that help us pave other streets, build new schools, build new parks, and keep our taxes low. So that's our strategy out here. We think it fits well within, you know, what we're asking for versus what you're giving up, but I don't want to minimize the fact that we are giving up something, we're giving up height. But I think we gain a big plethora of solutions out here for that one give that we have. And I'll just, I'll quit filibustering and let you all talk.
I have a question or two. So I'm appreciative that what you guys are trying to bring in is, you know, going to address some of the issues, you know, that you've mentioned, but trying to find a good balance that will make our community happy, but also the town happy. I'm just wondering, if you could stop right there, I want to ask. So in the handout that we have, it looks like you kind of have the building already in a specific area. Is that where it is proposed to be, like, on this map?
We can't answer that tonight, but I'll let you make whatever conclusions that you can from the documents that you have.
The reason I ask is because, you know, I'm curious if we could ask this business to push it back a little bit further, or, you know, if there are some other sort of modifications that we can make. I know you mentioned something about like a vine wall, I don't remember hearing that before, but I'm wondering if that is something that we could possibly ask for, where it's like a green facade, like a plant facade side, so it'd be a little more appealing, but then also can help remedy some of the environmental impact that you're going to get from a data center, because there are environmental impacts from it. So, you know, trying to find some of those balances that can maybe help mitigate some of those issues. I'm just kind of curious about those things, if those are things that we can request that, you know, maybe it goes back a tiny bit further if possible, and if we can request that the two sides that are facing neighborhoods have a plant facade on those sides to help out.
Yeah, I think those are easy commitments for us to make, is that we ask of those pretty much universally on our sites. We try to push them to the right area on a lot. We try to reduce tree cutting. And I said, you know, on this one, I think if you look at last month's PowerPoint presentation, which you don't have those slides here this evening, but we have talked about vine walls and things like that, and I believe that's what tentatively is proposed in a site like this. But again, we don't have, everybody's still in due diligence on a specific, which is why I really want to talk about that general area, because, you know, once we make this change, this does become a target area for not just, you know, who we're talking to right now, which is, you know, both of you mentioned this may or may not happen right now. This is a project that we're moving through the system. But long-term, this area has basically site-ready lots for this type of product. They do like this area because the electric is clean energy here, because of nuclear power plants, it's renewable, they're not getting a bunch of coal credits and carbon offsets in these areas, as well as the high-speed fiber throughout the Southwest. So we do like to say, I think it's an easy commitment, say, yeah, we're going to try to get every mitigation effort that we can, including setbacks and landscaping and facade stuff. There are never any guarantees, but that's just a part of how we operate in North Carolina. We're a Dillon Rule state, and so if the legislature doesn't specifically say we can require it, our hands are kind of cuffed in that regard. But Shelley's very persuasive, and so am I, so we tend to be able to get folks to work with us in a amicable manner.
The other question was about if we raise the height for the whole area, you know, how that could in the future become a problem for other buildings that then want to come in, other businesses. So is it something we can do where it is site-specific at the 72, and then adjacent is like a different MAC site? Is that something we can request?
So what is proposed is actually three different, we're focused on the highest one, the tallest building, which would be the possibility of a 72-foot-tall building. But as this amendment is proposed, there's actually three different heights. So it's currently limited to 40 feet, but there could be other uses, like someone mentioned, what if an office comes in? You know, how many seven-story office? No, they would be limited, they'd fall under the BG, which is the general commercial, and they'd be limited at 48 feet. So it's all dependent upon the classification and the use sets coming in. So what you've heard about tonight, the economic development project, would fall under the IG. So that's why we primarily focus on the largest impact or possible impact would be 72 feet. But there is other limitations proposed in this amendment, so it depends on the use that comes in, what the height may be.
I have a question. So if we do nothing, and we leave it how it is right now, and we decline this proposed change, then the area is then limited to development similar to what's already there, which is something that the community is not embracing, or because it created quite a bit of problems. So what I'm hearing tonight is that this option of 72 feet opens up the door to highest and best use, and uses that are less obtrusive to the community, and opens up a tax base to help the community in regards to our schools and our roads. And I think that just needs to be noted, you got to give a little to get what you want. So I think as a board, that's what we need to decide. We keep it how it is, and then future developments require all that road changes, require all the traffic changes, require a lot more work to accommodate the community. require all the traffic changes, require a lot more work to accommodate the community.
Okay, so we're considering GC area, general commercial, neighborhood commercial, and the EC area is the area that's causing the biggest issue at this point, which is the proposal to go from 40 feet to 72 feet in height, correct? So would you point out again on the map, the sections that are IG designated?
Sure, let me get to that map again. So the area we're focusing upon is this crosshatched area, all the parcels adjacent to Caldwell Park Drive. Now, within that area, what the PUD allows is currently three different types of uses in that area. So they could fall under the general business, the neighborhood, or the general industrial. They are not site-specific. So that IG, it depends on the use that's coming in. If somebody comes in in their, an office building or like a call center, we wouldn't let them go under IG. They would be, fall under the general commercial, which is consistent with your attachment E, the uses that are permissible within there. So they would be limited to the 48 feet in height. So the height, it could be any of the three. It could be the, I'm sorry, 48 feet, 50, or 72. We're not changing the old zoning designations. We were using our current classifications like the EC just to do comparables. So in that area, you currently can have BG, BN, or IG on any one of those parcels.
That is the answer that I was seeking. Any of those parcels within that cross-hatched area could be utilized for any one of those three, depending upon the use and the approval from the zoning office.
Yes, so any proposed development or even use of an existing building, they have to come and get clearance to ensure that they comply with the existing PUD as it relates to use, and then it corresponds with the height if someone is going to develop.
Well, what's amazing is that this development, this PUD has existed again since 1999. And so going in, again, as I stated before, there were sections that were designated as residential. And those sections, those sites, have been utilized to their highest and best use. Most of them, I think all of it, has been developed out as far as residential. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that has been utilized. So you have a portion that's commercial that has not been developed over all of these years, this 25 years, ever since we've been here in this town, and it has not been utilized. It has not been developed. So the question is, why? Why hasn't that been developed? There's something amiss there. Is it the lack of, I guess, mutability as far as the town of Harrisburg is concerned to change the regulations to be inviting to businesses? Is it that there's not a demand for such space in this area? But, you know, you think about how much is going on in the Charlotte region, one would question that. So it just seems mysterious that something hasn't already happened in that area in terms of commercial development as far as spilling it out, because I think that's only a portion has been completed. I think it was like 67% remains undeveloped. So why is that? And again, purpose of the UDO involves economic development. And again, taking into consideration the residential component of that and how residences are impacted. So it seems that there should be some sort of happy median. I mean, well, maybe not happy, but there should be some sort of compromise that we can come to regarding the use of the property in this area. And with there being interest in that area, that's a good thing. Again, piggybacking on what you said regarding the tax base and maintaining a sustainable town and bringing in jobs that support families. Of course, we don't want a lot of traffic. Who does? We don't need more traffic in Harrisburg. So what the manager mentioned about, you know, the number of cars that would potentially be coming into this theoretical development, sounds good, but we know that other uses will be allowed. If those zoning, the heights are allowed to be changed, that will broaden the potential for users to come into the business park, which is designed for business, which existed, you know, again, in 1999 before houses were built. Other comments?
Here's my two cents on it. South and West stays 40 foot. North and East, I'm kind of okay with up on the hill there with this project. What I don't like is that one lot, and that gives them the ability to have 72-foot-high building brought down to the road frontage. So, you know, basically what I'm saying to the right, so you got that high of developed land to the right gets approved too. So I know with this timeline, I would feel a whole lot better if there was a lot line designating them two separate, but I know that could simply be a phase two. That's the only thing I would like to see, the 40 South and West, that be limited to a 60, some kind of lot line or some kind of delineation that says you can't do a 72 down at road frontage on that right-hand part of that lot. Allow the 72-foot-high building up on the hill where the economic project is proposed. I don't know if that's due. I don't know. That's what I would be comfortable with recommending approved.
And Shelley, I would caution on that bill that I think when you start to get into very specific, it gets into spot zoning. Right, so although we agree, you know, I particularly would like to pick the requirements for each individual lot throughout town, and I think we'd have a better town. We're allowed to do that in home rule states, you know. So, you know, where I was at before here, we're a home rule state. You can tell what color shutters you want the builders to come in and put on. When we start looking at this, and I think one of the reasons 72 is not 70 or 71 is because our zoning folks really want to keep it consistent what Employment Center is. 72 is the max height for EC, and again, that's the max height. I think, you know, when I heard it too, I'm like, 72, that's huge. And then I look at the buildings that I was comparing to. I went and visited Ashburn, Virginia, and toured these sites. And then I look at, our condos are 60 foot, and we're talking 10 foot taller than that. So, you know, if this was EC, which everybody in town would be fine with, we could easily put townhomes and condos right next to the road, 70 foot tall, and it would meet all of our zoning and all those purple areas that we saw before. So I get what you're saying. I do think it's, we have a difficult time doing that logistically and legally, say, in 40, 60, 72. Yeah. But I agree with you in principle, I just, I don't think we're allowed to do it.
I don't think we're not allowed to do it, because we can just say it all stays 40.
You could. You could do that, or you could do a change.
So, and I'm trying to transition. I'm trying to allow that EC to be adjacent to existing EC, get some light commercial in between residential use. So I'm trying to, but again, I can't really do it because there's not a lot.
Yeah, I think it's a solid effort.
I tend to disagree with the proven incentive project because of that, because that does open it up for a 72-foot building, admit minimum road set, street setback, street side set, and these eight or nine houses get it.
I don't disagree. And to be clear, we're not asking you all to really, I mean, I wanted to give you a background on the economic development so that you knew why we called you in on your day off and asked you to get this in so quick. We're not asking for approval on that particular project. I do think it's good to give everybody the knowledge, especially the residents out there on what we're doing. We're just asking for a yes or no tonight, and then it'll move on from here.
And I have another question, and then this will be addressed on Shelley. So it doesn't change on the zoning map, even if it's an EC use? It doesn't necessarily show up on the zoning map as EC zone?
That's correct. It retains its PUD zoning classification.
EC is not an overlay.
No, it's a allowed category within the planned use development. So there are different types. Some allow multifamily, single-family, and say some small commercial. This one happened to include mixed use. That's correct. So this one happened to be approved with this business park that included some light industrial. It had a light industrial intention in the business park section, mixed use and the single family. So it was envisioned that way, and the corresponding use table that's in your packet allows in that business park area today, any type of manufacturing that's in there and such. So.
And another thing, however this lands, I think we should put at least some kind of note, I don't know if it's actually a condition, but the existing approved, the buffers, just say natural buffer. I think we need to reword that, strengthen that to say undisturbed buffers. There are undisturbed buffers there now. They need to remain that, but the original approved language says natural buffer. So I think wherever we land with everything else, I would recommend we do that.
Strengthen that.
Strengthen that.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, within the open space and buffers.
Good suggestion, Bill. And you had mentioned, and I didn't want it to slide away, since, you know, you mentioned Farmington and EC, and that's a great example. All of us that have driven down Farmington Parkway, if you haven't, drive down. It's a beautiful parkway. The apartments that are on the Mecklenburg side are about the size that we're talking about here, about 65, 70 feet. That'd be an equivalent building.
And as a reminder, what's the height of the, I believe it's Premier Yarns? What's the height of that building?
I believe it's at the max 40 feet.
This is just 40 feet.
Yeah, I would like to get a tape measure out on that, because that was before our time.
I should have scaled it.
And the, and the. Concrete panels out there are 10 feet, and there are five of them. So, I'm sorry, there are four of them, and then their parapet. So I bet they squeezed the building department a little bit on that. I think it's about 45, even though 40 is the max. But I'm sure back then, what qualifies as the top may have been a little iffy.
Hey, question on where do data centers line up in the 1997 documents on the attachment E's on? Because I've kind of gone through all of them.
Yeah, so we looked at more like a utility, you know, utility data, in the business data.
The difficulty is in 1997, you know, it was a good year for me, but I wasn't doing a lot of cloud computing, so it really wasn't a, it wasn't a thought. When we talked about data centers in 97, we were thinking data entry, phone calls, things like that. Yeah, yeah, so that's really where we're finding, it really doesn't exist in there. So when we started looking at our zoning, and we said, okay, it works well in EC, and then we looked at this area, and it was like, okay, well, that's an industrial park, so clearly that meets our EC, but it's so old that it's got these outdated numbers that don't match our current zoning, which I'm surprised, because typically when we do a UDO update, we do look at our PUDs and make some suggestions there as well. So this one has kind of eluded it. So I think that's just to answer that, I don't think they existed in 97.
But it wouldn't be radio, telephone, television mass or similar structures?
I don't think so.
I do have an issue with there being height maximums established in 1999. And the residential neighborhood portion was developed. The commercial has not been developed all the way out. And now in 2025, we're going to change those height maximums. That just bothers me a bit, that we want to come in and change what was already there. And maybe people bought into that planned development, knowing that, you know, the max height was, you know, 40 across the board, so they were okay with that. I'm okay with that. I can live next to that. And then 2025, okay, yeah, let's, listen, we need to make some changes, and we need to increase that by 30-some feet. You know, just looking at being in residents' shoes and thinking, what is going on? How could you change that now? Just to put it all the way out there, to be honest.
Economics changed. Our country has changed. Our data has changed. As you said, data was people entering is now data center. I think the concern about this is, you know, environmental impact, water usage, that you've just put in a great water tower for our residents, those bad water towers that impact this new building that needs a lot of air conditioning, just like this gentleman said. They do. So, I mean, there's a lot of science in that, but that, those to me are the biggest issues in regards to changing this, that impact for the whole community. And I guess we just really have to weigh that tax incentive. You know, diversifying our community in regards to tax base is important for us to thrive.
Change is constant.
That's going to happen.
That's for sure.
For me, I've reconciled, I'm sorry, I cut you off. I apologize, I thought you were done.
I don't need the filibustering.
For me, I reconciled that, because this is something that we, when we look at staff standpoint, it's like, we don't change things for the sake of change. And how do you reconcile that issue? And for us, it's a twofold trade-off. We, you know, if we were, from a staff standpoint, coming in and say, we want to change 72, and we don't expect any new use to come in here that's better than the uses that are there, we wouldn't be making this suggestion. I think the trade-off is that the folks that bought into this planned use development said, I can live with 40, but they had to also say, I can live with advanced manufacturing in my backyard and logistic warehousing in my backyard. And we weren't thinking of that in 1999 either. So we weren't really thinking of this 10 years ago, because it wasn't economical to do this far from the interstate. Those are now economical factors that are allowed as use in these areas. So from a staff standpoint, when we look at it, it's like, well, what is the benefit to both the resident out there and the resident as a whole versus what is the negative impact? So the negative impact is, hey, it's going up in height. There's no doubt, there's no way to lipstick that pig. That's happening. We think there's some things that can mitigate that, but the trade-off is the mitigation of intense uses and the mitigation of taxes. So obviously, there's a tax incentive to this. You can generate more revenue per acre out here than you could on a townhome subdivision or multiple logistics centers. And the townhome subdivision and multiple logistics centers have way more impact. So if we can reduce those impacts, and if we can generate a solid, sustainable tax base, those are the trade-offs. So that's how we reconciled that question when we looked at it from a staff standpoint. Less impact to the neighbor overall, even though we're adding some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think really the only thing that is really, like, holding me back a lot here, like, when I first heard about it, and I was like, 70 feet, that's crazy. But then in hearing what it's possibly going to be, it made me feel a little bit better as far as, like, helping with some of the concerns that the community has with, like, traffic and like noise and like those sorts of things. However, the thing that's still, like, holding me back is like that that whole area can be max 70, 72, whatever it was, feet. And so I just get concerned that, you know, there are areas that are closer to the neighborhoods that could have this huge building that does have more of an impact, that does have, you know, loading docks and trucks and other things that come along with it. And that's my only concern, is that in letting this one building that could be, you know, potentially really beneficial to the town and low-impact to the community. potentially really beneficial to the town and low impact to the community to a degree is opening up for those two other sort of areas closer to the neighborhoods that could be a lot more impactful. And that's like the only thing that I feel like is really holding me back on this.
And I don't have a a great, you know, soothing answer to that, but but Lisa and I had this conversation in my office Friday. And so if she doesn't mind, I'll steal the same question that I had asked Lisa, which was, you know, we don't need 72 feet to get like, you're not going to have more loading docks or more, they don't do loading docks vertical, right? Vertical is adding this use that doesn't allow there. So really, the the choice is, if if it was you, and and again, I picked on Lisa and Mark when they were in the office, but it's your house, you get to make a decision, would you rather have an Amazon Logistics at 40 feet or a data center at 72? And that's an individual question for for everybody out there. Not everybody would answer it the same. I would answer it one way because I'm big on privacy and noise and impacts and the daily rigor. I would I would deal with the height. Some people wouldn't like that height, you know, would rather deal with the beeping of the backup trucks and and not see it and not deal with the noise and use white noise machines or whatever. So I think those are your, that's the question that I think everybody on the board would consider, that the residents would consider, and that I've asked the town council to consider.
Are there any plans for improving the road network over there for the neighborhood? You know, how would you go about it? Or are there opportunities to connect all 40?
The the short answer is there aren't any options to connect anywhere because the railroad has a federal prohibition on at-grade crossings. So we can't open Old Millbrook, which is now McLeod, to go across. We can't do anything in Mecklenburg County in the line. Our jurisdiction ends basically right at Blue Dot. You know, there are some safety upgrades that can be made at Caldwell Road, you know, where we have the T intersection, but it's an NC DOT route. You know, we discussed that with them, but our best mitigation efforts are to keep traffic as low as possible. There's no like secondary or tertiary access point where we're going to get across the railroad tracks. We're just, we're pinned in in that area of town. We are looking in other areas where we might be able to get grade separation. It's expensive, but in this area, Caldwell's the only, the only way across the railroad.
Other comments?
Other board.
I just have a more, I think, as discussed, there's been no economic because there's nobody interested in us at 72. And or and what comes up later, it will be manufacturing.
They have no control over the use once we approve it.
That's true.
This economic incentive go belly up, we've already made it, I do, and it could be any of the approved uses now with the ability to build 72 foot. So that's that is the downside of it. So I just, without some kind of graduation, some kind of gradual increasing the intensity as they get away from that existing neighborhood, I just, I can't make a motion to approve it. So that would be my recommendation to deny.
Well, is that a motion, Bill? Are you making a motion?
Disapproved, or I would be willing to make a dis, that motion unless somebody wants to discuss any further. Unfortunately, as much as I like the fact that we need some economic incentive around here, we do need to do more than residential, I don't think this is the place to do it. I think we have too much potential for negative consequences trying to get some economic development approved, make it a site good for one potential customer, and they go belly up, and then it's 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 done, it's done. That use is not conditional to the approval. You can't do that. So I am going to make a motion that we disapprove of that one condition, that we do not know for a fact that this potential economic incentive project will come to fruition. Then any existing uses would be approved now 72 foot as opposed to the existing 40 foot.
So so I need to just intervene here. So it needs to, the economic specific use cannot be part of the reason. We just gave background as to what sort of, what was the impetus in this request. So if you just, if you just don't support the 72 feet, then that's fine based on what, you know, impacts to the neighbors, and that's fine. But as far as naming a potential use in that, it wouldn't really support.
So you need to clean that up.
Clean it up. I recommend we disapprove it because I do not want to allow additional heights available and possible for the existing uses approved in this PUD.
We do appreciate the thought process, though. Mr. gives us better insight.
Language ours was not my business.
So you recommend disapproval of H 202501R Caldwell Business Park PUD amendment?
Yes.
And that's, of course, regarding increasing the height, maximum height allowances in that business park. Is there a second to that motion?
Did somebody got a vote to approve?
We have a motion to disapprove this this item, H 202501R Caldwell Business Park that has been seconded. Any further discussion?
I hate the thought of potentially losing out on the low-impact, high economic plus.
But it's not guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed.
It's high in the sky until.
But we, but without it, we have no option. By not doing it, it's not there, and it does not spur the economic development that comes along with data centers, that comes along with the employees that work there, that comes along with the community that brings in data.
Promote that type of stuff in stuff that's already zoned by right, 72 foot tall buildings.
We don't have utilities for it. We don't have the high tension electric for it.
We don't have the, also they want so they can go to that substation.
They need power.
So there's no way they would come back with a special request permit or anything like that for a specific.
It's not, it's not an option.
It doesn't, it doesn't, again, it doesn't change. There isn't.
With what we have now.
The residents of the town lose if it falls there. Now, we've made that EC all the way down to their backyard, and I don't think that was the intent of a PUD.
I mean, the residents could still potentially lose with what we have now, though, depending on what comes in there. We still could have.
That's already proved, it's only 40 foot.
Yeah.
Undesirable uses already proved, but they're only 40 foot tall, so it won't be 72 foot tall.
But with the higher use comes less impact to that.
Okay, well, again, we can vote how we feel.
Okay, are there any other comments on the floor regarding this motion?
I was just saying, Shelly, at the prior meeting, you had mentioned that it might be an option to do some of it, but now is it, is it not an option?
So so the original approval was the entire business park area. You can make a recommendation to approve with modification. So you could say everything on the north side of Caldwell Park, you support the height there and maintain on the lower. That would, that would be a proposed modification to what's before you. What we can't get into is a little bit of the other discussion of, but on this particular lot, you want it setback, and we can't do that. But as far as your recommendation, recommend to disapprove, recommend approval with modifications. And I heard you, Bill, earlier, talk about modifying the performance standard related to natural buffers versus undisturbed, correct?
At this point, we have a motion that's on the floor.
So it was just our disapproval, so we just need to decide.
Right, that we want to address.
Vote on the motion on the floor.
Okay, can we have multiple motions on the floor?
Yeah, if we can do that, I will move my second and go with staying. Sorry.
So but there's a motion on the floor, so we need to finish that.
We have a motion on the floor, so we have to finish that.
We need to finish that and then.
So all those in favor of the motion that is on the floor presently, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion fails.
Let's offer compromise now.
So what do we have as far as a compromise or another motion?
The way they were stating it on the south and west side, keep the the height of what it is on the northeast side allowing 72 foot.
I agree with that. I also agree with his modification earlier where we changed the language that it is.
Okay, so I need one motion. I need one motion that's going to put all of that in together.
So I'm just trying to talk through it. So we can have one motion with multiple modifications in it, hopefully. So for me, I feel like we should have multiple modifications of, one, what you just stated, where the height is contingent on where it is, and then modification that Bill recommended earlier, where we change the language so that way we make sure that that one area that is natural stays natural.
Undisturbed.
Undisturbed.
Okay, that buffer area that's established, that that buffer area cannot be.
Change the word.
Okay. And that's on the western side.
And then I don't know if it can be put into the modification or not, but like, you know, the suggestion of speaking with the company and having like plant facades to help, that cannot be in part of the motion, that's just a suggestion I have to give you guys later.
Yeah, those are, those are more site-specific stuff, but I, I do think in modifying the PUD, that you can use Caldwell Industrial Park Drive as a dividing line, and I think you can also modify the language of the buffer from natural to undisturbed. So I believe both of those can be a recommendation for passage with those two modifications.
And that is what I suggest we hear.
Okay.
I'll start that one.
Approve with modifications, we state modifications.
Motion to approve with modifications.
With Caldwell Park Drive being the divider between the southwest, south and west remaining at the 42, and the northern east side increasing to the 72 height there. Second, the natural buffer area, undisturbed.
Okay, so you said the western area being what height?
Remains at its current 40 foot.
Remains at 40 foot, and so the northern section would be at the 72?
Northern section.
Okay.
Each would have that.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that the western side remain at its existing height max, and then the northern side is increased to 72 with natural areas remaining undisturbed and, what else was there? Natural buffer remaining undisturbed that has been seconded. Any discussion on that motion that has been seconded for H 202501? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of that motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. The motion carries. It is approved with modifications as stated into record, and we also need a statement of reasonableness and consistency regarding that motion that we skipped over, so that you add it's reasonable with the halibut.
It is reasonable with the halibut and in the best interest of the public and consistent with the UDO goals of the halibut as presented.
Okay.
I will be better at this. You better be already.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on down our agenda for tonight.
So we do need a vote on that, since it was put in a second, a separate motion that you find that it's a reasonable request and in consistent with the UDO and the halibut, just as you stated, that needs to be in the form of a motion, a second, and a vote.
Okay, okay. So that is your motion that is reasonable and consistent with the halibut?
Yeah.
Okay, and a second on that? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. So is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The ayes have it, and the motion regarding reasonableness and consistency carries. Moving along, next on our agenda, we have no new business. Actually, we have no staff updates. Are there any staff updates?
I do want to try to keep on your calendar, the planning board, the regularly scheduled planning board meeting for the 15th. We do have some text amendments lined up, so we, I guess I'm inquiring with the board if you're able to attend that meeting. We would still like to have it to keep some of our text amendments moving through.
Fair enough. Any announcements from the board? Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
First adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned.